President.
Board member Cornell. Board member Caldwell. Chair Avant.
Present.
You have five present.
Okay, thank you, we have a quorum present. We're gonna now stand for the pledge of allegiance. And I'd ask everyone to remain standing for a moment of silence. During the moment of silence, please remember to keep in your thoughts the families of the following individuals. Deandre Shannon, eight-year-old from Gardenview Elementary. Devon Johnson, twelve-year-old from Grandview Heights Middle. Valerie Houston, principal at Macon Hall Elementary. Jane Tobias, an employee at Ridgeway Middle. Marine Sergeant William Michael Brown, a recent graduate from Bolton High School. And Burnell Smith II, an alumnus of the class of 1990 of Whitehaven High School. Please also remember the families of those who lost loved ones in the Las Vegas shooting, and as well as the families who have been devastated across our nation, Texas, Florida, and Puerto Rico, from the recovering from the devastating hurricanes. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. In an effort for Shelby County to take a moment to highlight the tremendous accomplishments of our students, our teachers, and principals, we want to do some recognitions on tonight, October 24th, in light of our business meeting happens to be on Halloween, so we've asked a lot of our principals and our students to come so that we could recognize them at our work session. First, I'd like to recognize those that are being awarded the Presidential Award for Excellence in Mathematics and Science Teaching. That is Mrs. Yan Lee Kuei and Dr. Shike Madu. Both are teachers from White Station High School. To receive the Presidential Award for Excellence in Mathematics and Science in Teaching, a teacher must exhibit five dimensions of outstanding teaching. These dimensions include mastery of content appropriate for the grade level taught, use of instructional methods and strategies that are appropriate for the students in the classroom, and that support student learning, effective use of student assessment to evaluate, monitor, and improve student learning, reflective practice, and lifelong learning to improve the teaching and student learning, and leadership in education outside of the classroom. It is our honor to recognize Mrs. Kuei in her fourth year at White Station, who has exhibited these three dimensions as teaching, as she teaches pre-AP Calculus and AP Calculus. And Dr. Madu, who is in his sixth year at White Station, and has exhibited these dimensions of outstanding teaching as he teaches AP Biology. Congratulations to Ms. Kuei and Dr. Madu. If those individuals are present tonight, if they could come forward. Board members, can you join me for a picture?
Yeah.
Well, you know, we usually don't have one because we usually don't do this until
Next, we would like to recognize the recipients of the 2017 TSSAA Bridges Awards. Those recipients will be Principal of the Year, James Bo Griffin. Female Coach of the Year, Nefertiti Beckett. And Male Coach of the Year, Rashad Haynes. Just as a please come forward. Principal Griffin is being recognized as Principal of the Year. Principal Griffin has dedicated 23 years to his career in education, 21 have been with SES. Principal Griffin, and in 2006 was awarded the TSSAA Athletic Director of the Year. He has written the TSSAA Mercy Rule for football and basketball, and is a member of the TSSAA Legislative Council. Principal Griffin truly believes that we are here to serve the needs of all of our children and supports our staff that educate them every day. He is married to Rebecca Ostle and has three children, Lindsay, Colin, and Elijah. Please welcome me, representing Bo Griffin. I'm gonna keep going because there's a little bio for each of our recipients. Coach Beckett is being recognized as the Female Coach of the Year. Coach Beckett is an alumna of Memphis Central High School and the University of Memphis, and has served as coach for both Memphis Central High School and Bellevue Middle School. Since 2015, Ms. Beckett has coached at Memphis Central High School as an Assistant Girls' Basketball and Boys' Track Coach. The girls' basketball team is the 2017 TSSAA State Championship Runner-Up, and the boys' track is the 2016 and 17 TSSAA State Championship Team. In her role as track coach at Bellevue, since spring of 2012, she has led her team to multiple championships, including SEIA County Champs, MS Sectional Champs, and State Champs for both 2016 and 2017 seasons. Nefertiti is a two-time MS Track and Field Coach, a Girls' Coach of the Year, and she's also the coach of my daughter Peyton in Track. So way to go, Ms. Beckett. Coach TT, as they call her. Just briefly, Coach Haynes is being recognized Male Coach of the Year. He is the alumnus of Memphis Central High School and Middle Tennessee State University, and has served Memphis Central High School as the head girls' basketball coach and the head boys' and girls' track coach. In his three years at the program, he has led the basketball program to the state championship tournament twice, winning runner-up in 2017. He has produced an undefeated boys' track and field program each year, winning the SIA County Championships, TSSAA West Tennessee Sectional Championships, and the state championships. Coach Haynes is a three-time TSAA Boys' and Track Field Coach of the Year for 2015, 2016, and 17. In 2016, he's Co-Student Association and Field Coach of the Year, and U.S. Track Field and Cross Country Association. I don't want to leave anything out because these folks are very accomplished. Please congratulate me finally in representing Principal Griffin, Coach Beckett, and Coach Haynes. Yes, we are. So also tonight, we have the wonderful opportunity to highlight and recognize the 2017 SIA Small School Volleyball Champions, which are our Bellevue School Lady Bobcats. Ladies, if you could please come forward. The Lady Bobcats have won the county championship for the small school division for the past five consecutive years. They have only lost one regular season game in that time span. This young team has come together under the leadership of eighth graders to have a special season. Through their hard work, they have been able to accomplish these things and truly understand that the game of volleyball and what it takes to compete at a high level. These young ladies are led by Coach Christopher Dees, Athletic Coach Byron Harris, and Principal Kevin Malone. The Lady Bobcats include Lauren Roberts, Amari Thomas, Aleah Miller, Jerrilyn Richardson, Zion Allen, Kayla Long, Tiara Avant, Alexandra Blackman, Janila Quinn, Ebony Allen, Jada Banks, and Alexandra Burford. Please welcome me, and please congratulate the Lady Bobcats. Board members, we also have the opportunity to congratulate the 2017 SIA Small Division Soccer Champions, which are the Maxine Smith Steam Academy Soccer Team. The Maxine Smith Steam Academy Lady Knights Soccer Team completed an undefeated championship season, conceding only one goal during the regular season and one goal in the playoffs. The team played with competitive grace and elegant sportsmanship. The 2017 Lady Knights truly exemplify the spirit of teamwork. The Lady Knights are led by Coach Kyle Cusisto, Athletic Coach Margaret Norris, and Principal Michael Dempster. The Lady Knights include Kelsey Baker, Lydia Barnett, Kara Bartlett, Gracie Brigance, Margot Burbank, Jada Carter, Sidney Charles, Evelyn Everie, Amelia Harrington, Jayla Kimbrough, Meredith LaRoe, Rachel Larkins, London Leachman, Karen Norma, Ava Parks, Ava Richardson, Harmony Shetfield, Emily Smith, Brittany Stewart, and our one and only Lauren Woods, the daughter of Board Member Kevin Woods. Congratulations, our Lady Knights.
Lady Knights!
Break out in the cherry to the game.
Lady Knights, let's go!
Last but not least, we'd like to recognize the 2017 SIA Large Division Volleyball Champions at Hickory Ridge Middle School. Please come forward. The Lady Wildcats are coming off three undefeated seasons and back-to-back city championships. The Lady Wildcats are led by Coach Latrice Noel, Athletic Director Eric Garner, and Principal Cedric T. Smith. The Lady Wildcats include Kennedy Coffey, Patricia Rogers, Ebony Perez, Asia Freeman, Parisia Wilson, J.C. Henry, Gaia Akoff, Catlin Clark, Carmody Williams, Tameri Higabat, and Marjonne Wilson. And I don't think that they're here tonight, but we do want to congratulate them on a great season. Okay, so now we're gonna move to approval of the agenda. The question is now of the approval of the agenda, are there any amendments to the agenda?
Madam Chair, we want to remove item 9.2, APPT contract.
Okay, see, we will still have a report from the Joint Committee, which will be, there were some things that weren't covered actually in the, that weren't covered in the Academic Review and Community Engagement, so we're gonna still do the presentation during that period, although we've removed that item, we still will have a presentation during the work session. So the approval of the minutes pending, approve of the agenda moving 9.2, can I get a roll
Board member Woods.
Here.
Aye.
Board member Love.
Aye.
Board member McCormick.
Aye.
Board member Jones.
Aye.
Board member Bibbs.
Aye.
Board member Cornell.
Aye.
Chair Avant. You have seven ayes.
Okay, the agenda is approved. So now we're moving to the chairman's report. I just wanted to share a little bit about some of the highlights, things that have happened since the last time that we were able to get together, board members. I was able to participate with the BTW and LaRoe's Backpack Donation that was sponsored by FedEx and supported through the Women's Foundation, Memphis Housing Authority, and the City of Memphis. One thing that was exceptional about that event, and I want to thank the district for all of their help and support, we were able to open a new resource room at Booker T. Washington that will be able to service the families of South City, and as you know, there's a lot of transition that's going on in South City, but we see this as a highlight, that there will be an opportunity for both families, parents, and the students to have access to resources right there in the community. So there will be charrettes that will be taking place over the next few weeks, with urban strategies leaning to have conversations with both parents and children about the particular resources that will be available for them at the Community Resource Center. So I do want to thank, there were over a thousand backpacks that were actually given out at the back-to-school drive, so we're really proud of that. Also, I wanted to highlight that this month, the district celebrated Hispanic Heritage celebrations all across the district. There were celebrations at Jackson Elementary that I believe Board Member Jones attended, but there was also a district-wide celebration at Hickory Ridge Middle. There were nine schools that participated in the heritage celebration. There were resources that were provided by our Community Engagement, including bilingual parent resources. There were about forty vendors that were present, and Ms. Jones and I got to go and participate, and I'd have to say that one of my favorite performances was the homage to Puerto Rico, as well as the daughter, mother-and-daughter folklore performance that was performed by Well Station. So we want to always acknowledge the great things that our students, families, and students are participating in across the district. At this time, I'd like to take a moment to appoint the board committee chairs for the 2017-2018 school year. Ad hoc committee appointment chairs, our academic performance would be Ms. Miska Clay Bibbs. Capital Needs and Facilities, Billy Orgel. Community Engagement, Stephanie Love. Evaluation, Scott McCormick. Internal Board Operations, Miska Clay Bibbs. Legislative and Advocacy will be co-chaired by Stephanie Love and Kevin Woods. Procurement will be chaired by Teresa Jones. The committee chair for the Standing Budget, Finance, and Audit Committee will be Chris Caldwell. And I'd like to take a moment, if there are any board members have any comments or would like to be recognized.
Okay.
Okay. Ms. Jones?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to thank members of the staff who provided me with some really good information. I was a facilitator at a breakout session at the Council of Great City Schools, and I wanted to thank Dr. Griffin, Dr. Ray, Dr. Angela Hargrave, and Monica Jordan. I know there were others who helped get that information together, but it was really helpful. I think I did you proud. So I just want to thank you for that information that you provided.
Okay. And I'd also like to just recognize that Board Member Cornell, Board Member Cornell also wanted to make sure that board members had a piece that he's provided for us, which is Perspectives on Psychological Science, that he wants to make sure that all board members have a copy of. Mr. Cornell.
What this is, is a number of scientific studies that prove something that I, we practiced when I was going to school, and that is rest is not idleness, implications for the brain's default mode for human development education. What this means is, for the brain and the student to take positive breaks during the day actually enhances learning. And so I appreciate y'all taking a look at this.
Absolutely. That would be the end of my chair report. I'm gonna move over to Superintendent for the Superintendent Report.
I want to use my report to discuss an issue I think that's been in the forefront in the media lately, and that's our vacancies. And so I want to do a couple things, want to clear the record on something, and then I'm gonna ask Ms. Small to do a few things, present you with the actual data as it relates to our vacancies, how long it takes to fill those vacancies, where those vacancies are, the strategies that the Human Resources Department has been using to fill those vacancies. But I want to just start off by just trying to bring really clarity, context, and candor to the discussion. And I think that when we start off with clarity, I just want to be clear that the headline that appeared both here and nationally was not accurate. There was a suggestion that there were kids in BTW who had no certified teacher, and we were violating state law and all that. And my frustration is that oftentimes we get all these different information requests, and we try to be as transparent and respond as quickly as we can, but we often need time to get right information to requesters. And then sometimes board members were told, well, if you don't give me information, then we're just gonna say you didn't comment. And that puts us in a negative light. So what we found with BTW is that the sub who was in the class was a retired chemistry teacher who had a chemistry teaching license. And so those kids who were in that class, and in addition to the teacher who left, who was promoted to go to the I-zone, she actually came back almost through April and co-planned with this teacher to make sure that they gave their best efforts around these students. So that's just what the clarity and the facts are around that particular situation. Additionally, I think it's important to talk about context. I know our Human Resources Department strives to have 100% of its classrooms filled every single day, that's the goal. But we are board members in a national teacher shortage. I don't say that as an excuse, I just say that for context. When we looked at the data around other similarly situated urban districts, their vacancy rates were much higher than here at Shelby County Schools. I think we started last year with 99% of our classes staff, this year with 98% of our classes staff. Again, we continue to try to do better, but I just want to make sure we have that context. But candidly speaking, anytime you have a class that doesn't have a teacher, we're not putting kids in the best position to succeed. So I don't care if it's one class, that there's a long-term sub in there, we've got to make sure that we are consistently employing best practices to make sure that we're filling our classes with effective teachers. But I just get frustrated sometimes, board members, because there's always a rush to judgment when it comes to Shelby County Schools. Somebody can say something and it becomes a gospel without giving us a fair opportunity to provide facts and circumstances to either confirm or not confirm. We're not in the business of trying to hide information. I mean, this is a situation that school districts around the country are grappling with, and I welcome a discussion about staffing and whether we have the right policies in place. We want to talk a little bit about mutual consent, the way the law says on mutual consent, the way that we apply mutual consent. So we do welcome the discussion. And if I have, I just had one more slide, I don't know if I have a clicker. I just want to put that up there, because I don't know whether that'll be corrected. But BTW had a retired certified chemistry teacher leading this chemistry class for the Georgia 2016-17 school year, reports to the country were erroneous. And what the statute says is that if you are not certified, you have 20 days, and if you're gonna be a certified sub, you have to be, there are a number of factors, but if you're a retired teacher and you have the certification, then you count as a certified sub under Tennessee law. That's exactly what happened last year. Now, the good part, I think, about this is that it has caused us to take a really deep dive in all of our classes, and we're tracking down any instance where, you know, there may have been some compliance issues. And I think that what I heard from board members rightly so, is what are we doing for kids that may not have had a long-term teacher? So effective immediately, we are going to institute real-time tutoring for kids in EOC courses that don't have certified teachers in them. In addition to, we're gonna add a component to our Summer Learning Academy to give reinforcements to kids who had any time without, or to offer reinforcements to kids who had any time without a full-time certified teacher. I want to talk a little bit about some of the corrective action that we put in place, and then Trinette will obviously dive deeper into this. So when the discussion around BTW, they did talk about, there was a teacher in the class, I think she left in November. So effective immediately, what we're doing is requiring all central office jobs to be posted earlier. We're not allowing anybody to leave from a teaching position unless their replacement has been identified. This year, as the board remembers, we were very aggressive in anticipating vacancies. So the board authorized us to hire 50 teachers centrally. You know, typically what happens, all those decisions are made at the school level, but we hired 50 teachers centrally, and we've been deploying them throughout the year to classes that don't have a teacher or where the principal's not selecting a teacher. As the board recalls, last year, we did not access any teachers last year. We kept all teachers on, even ones who lost their position because of declining enrollment in school, and we've been deploying them all year in anticipation of this national teacher shortage. We revised our hiring timeline because the data shows that when you hire earlier, you're much more likely to have more qualified people in the pool, and when you wait till later in the year, the pool shrinks. And I think that Ms. Small's gonna talk about the pool and what they're doing with the pool. Number of strategies for filling the vacancies she's talked about, you know, and again, we're gonna have these extended learn opportunities for students. And one of the things that we're going to, I've talked to the academic team about seeing is that having a small percentage of school staff can be baked into principals' evaluations. I think that, you know, ultimately, Human Resources has to get them great candidates and has to support them in the hiring process, but I know I've spoken with a number of principals, and principals- Uh, but I know I've spoken with a number of principals, and principals will, will say that, uh, they're, they are very instrumental in the hiring process. So these are just some of the corrective actions that we, uh, have taken, uh, and have been working on anyways. With that, I want to turn it over to, uh, Ms. Small, and obviously, uh, we want to answer any questions the Board may have.
Turn it over for Q and As or a presentation?
Prior to Ms. Smalls, I think, I'm gonna recognize Board Member Woods.
Oh, I'm sorry. Um, thank you, Madam Chair. I was wondering if he was turning it over for Q and A or if she's giving a presentation?
She's gonna do a presentation at this point. You'll wait. Okay. Thank you.
I'm gonna put in the budget for another clicker, so we don't have to share it.
I just requested that also. Okay. Good afternoon or good evening, Board Members. Um, let's see if this is working. Okay. Here we go. Um, I think Superintendent Hobson, he did briefly touch on this. Um, these are the actual headlines that have been in newspapers and, you know, throughout social media, and, and, you know, at some point, perception becomes reality. I think every school district in the country is somewhat concerned about the conversations related to a national teacher shortage, and I will say, you know, Shelby County Schools is not immune to that, even though I feel, you know, we, we've implemented several strategies, but this is, you know, a reality that we, we all have to, you know, honestly prepare for and take note of in terms of ensuring that all of our classrooms are a hundred Okay, so this next slide just goes through, um, the, kind of, the current state, um, of teacher recruitment and staffing, and it also just kind, kind of gives, um, a historical view of what happened last, um, last staffing season. Um, so even though our teacher vacancy, uh, numbers are down compared to this time last year, we have been able to, in spite of the teacher shortage, um, articles and communications and just the narrative around that, we have been able to actually increase the number of candidates in our candidate pool. We've also implemented, uh, several new strategies and actually hired more teachers, which I will get into later on in the presentation. And this, this past hiring season or staffing season, some of the new things that we implemented, obviously the new teacher compensation plan, um, later on in the presentation, I'll speak to some of the, um, some of the feedback that we've received about the teacher comp plan, but what we do know and what we can say that as a district, Shelby County Schools, um, made a huge investment in teachers, this budget, um, we actually, um, approved over twelve million dollars in terms of how much we wanted to contribute to teacher salaries and to our new compensation plan. So I think that just speaks to Shelby County Schools' commitment to our teachers and, and ensuring that we are able to attract and retain the best and the brightest. Some of the other strategies that we implemented were, uh, we were able to hold our budget check out earlier, working in collaboration with our finance office. Uh, we also had earlier transfer periods, and we were also able to post central office positions that are traditionally attractive to teachers. We got those positions posted earlier in hopes of that we would be able to find an appropriate backfield once this school year started. We also limited, uh, teacher accessing. A lot of times, at the end of the, end of the school year, due to projections and budget cuts, we have to lay off a lot of teachers, and that becomes a headline in the newspaper. You know, Shelby County School lays off two or three hundred teachers. Um, but what the, the headline, the subsequent headline is never that we hire like ninety percent of those teachers back. So this year, what we did, working in collaboration, again, with our finance office and Superintendent Hobson, um, while we still had to go through the process, we held on to those teachers so that we actually kept those teachers and deployed them out to vacancies. So I think that speaks to how we were trying to think about, uh, preparation and how we prepare in terms of keeping, uh, our schools fully staffed. Again, as Superintendent Hobson mentioned, that we were able to centrally hire and deploy, uh, teachers. So, uh, HR worked in collaboration with the District Academic Office, and we interviewed and hired teachers, uh, from the central office, and they were deployed out to schools. Principals had the option of going ahead and hiring that, that TOSA or Teacher on Special Assignment into their vacancy, or they could continue looking for, um, a candidate of their own to make their selection. But that was another way that we wanted to ensure that our schools had certified teachers in front of children, children and students. Some of the things, uh, other things that we want to highlight are that, um, fewer teachers are actually leaving the district, um, but I think in, in terms of talking about recruitment, you also have to talk about retention. So a little later in the presentation, we'll go over some of the attrition numbers. Remember, we'll, we'll get to it. Uh, the other thing that we wanted to highlight that, um, while we're identifying positions earlier in order for us to secure high, high-quality teachers, we really, really have to work with principals to ensure that they are able to make their hires as early as possible. Superintendent Hobson also spoke to this, um, that we cannot emphasize the importance of, of hiring candidates early. The teacher staffing work is very cyclical. It, it aligns with the school year. So we have really got to work with, um, academics to ensure that we carve out time for principals to be able to hire. Okay, moving to this next slide. This, this just represents information on our candidate pool. Um, and I think the highlight here is, we had a candidate pool goal, and we were able to exceed that pool goal by two hundred candidates. So actually, um, we were able to recruit more candidates. We actually had, uh, a large number of applications actually submitted. Uh, so I think that just speaks to some of the amazing work of the HR team in terms of still getting teachers in the pool in spite of fewer folks going into the teaching profession. Uh, this next slide represents just our hires by subject area. Um, and I think when we look at the number of hires that we've made to date, this presentation, uh, I think was actually prepared last week. As of last week, we had hired nine hundred and five teachers for this current school year, so that's the number of hires that we've made for this particular school year. Obviously, most of our, um, our hires, um, when we look at subject areas, for elementary, um, and I think the second largest, and I think, uh, there's something that's missing there, it should be special education in terms of, of the subject areas where we make the most hires. Uh, one of the things that, um, I, I mentioned earlier that we're proud of is we were able to hit, like, our candidate pool numbers, we're able to hit, um, in terms of, of making sure that we're staffing, so we're, we're hit the numbers. But some of the feedback that we've received from principals is the quality of the candidates and the quality of the new hires. So what we normally do, uh, in, in terms of how do we, um, measure the quality of the new hires, obviously, we look at their performance. So when we look at the past three years, we're pretty on par, um, year over year in terms of how our teachers, how our new hire, newly hired teachers actually perform. Uh, for the sixteen-seventeen school year, which we just got those results back, eighty-two percent of those teachers that were newly hired, um, met or exceeded the expectations, meaning that they were a TAM III or above. This, this chart represents, um, our teacher vacancies, and this year, uh, we did begin to measure and report our vacancies in a different way than we've done in past years. Uh, Superintendent Hobson is very committed to ensuring that our schools have the staff that they need, so what we report are real-time, uh, numbers. So the, the numbers that we reported day one of school, those were actual vacancies. And I, I do honestly feel like that is the right thing for us to do. Traditionally, we have used a, a vacancy ID date. We would report our first day of school staffing based off of, um, X number of, um, vacancies were open that were identified two weeks prior to the first day of school. But what we're starting to report now are more real-time numbers so that everyone always has a sense of who's at our schools and who's in front of our children. So this year, we did start off with a hundred and seventy-four vacancies, and that was real-time day-one numbers. Um, but as, if you look at the green line, what you can see is the progress that we've made in terms of, um, filling our vacancies mid-year. Uh, last year, this was an issue that we really started to aggressively attack in terms of how do we handle mid-year vacancies. Uh, when a teacher leaves in the middle of the year, it does make the recruitment and staffing, uh, much more challenging, but I think, um, we've been able to make a huge amount of progress there. One of the strategies that we implemented last year was, um, signing day, and that was a strategy that was used to address mid-year vacancies. These are just a couple of pictures from signing day. Uh, we hope to make that an annual event. Actually, we're in, um, in the process of planning, uh, a signing day for November to knock out the current vacancies that we have. Uh, as I mentioned earlier, um, when you talk about recruitment and staffing, there is, um, you also have to address teacher attrition and, uh, if teachers are leaving, because it, retention is as equally as important as, um, the recruitment piece. So this chart represents, um, separations for the months of August and September. Um, we'll have more complete data, uh, as we wrap up the month of October, but just looking at these, um, these numbers here, there's about a forty-six percent decrease in the number of teachers who left us this year, uh, for the months of August and September compared to last year. So, uh, you know, I know, um, and you guys have heard a lot of noise this year just about a lot of things that are going on in the districts, in the district, but I think what this speaks to is the commitment of teachers to stick with us even when times can get a little hard. Um, teachers are sticking with us, and we're very appreciative of that. This, uh, this next slide just goes, it digs a little deeper into why teachers may, um, choose to leave the district. I think, um, we, we've done a lot of work in this area. We do have an exit survey that, um, of the teachers that leave, about forty percent, thirty to forty percent of teachers actually complete the survey. Um, but what we wanted to do, um, this past year was dig a little deeper. We actually started this process last year where we reached out to former employees or former teachers to really, really have a conversation with them to see, uh, why they left the district, if there were things that we could have done differently. And I think, um, for some of the categories that we see here represented where a large percentage of teachers left, for example, if you look at the category of left for another district, when we reached out to some of those teachers, they did talk about things like, um, salary and compensation, um, different initiatives that come down through the district or through the state. They're not really sure where all of these districts, uh, where all of these, uh, regulations and, um, initiatives come from, so that was a concern. And one thing that also kind of popped up was, you know, building conditions, those kinds of things, all speaking to, with just making sure that we have a conducive environment, not only for learning for our students, but also a conducive environment, uh, for teaching for our teachers. Uh, one of the things, um, as you talk about, you know, teachers, and as you analyze the data, you have to really think about what strategies can we implement to show teachers that we are appreciative of all the hard work that they do. And as I indicated earlier, more teachers are sticking with us, so we definitely want to make sure that we are implementing programs that's, that speak to, um, that we need them here, we appreciate them sticking with, with us. This is, uh, this slide just represents, uh, we had a couple of initiatives this year or this past year. Of course, we had Teachers Rock and Principals Rock, but we also started something called SES My Day. And this was just where we, um, went to a school to surprise a teacher. We already had a sub lined up for them, and that was their day. They got a, um, like, a gift basket and maybe a gift certificate, but that went over really well with teachers. They seemed to really, really appreciate that, so we will definitely continue that program on as well as implement new initiatives in terms of showing our teachers and our employees that they are definitely appreciated. Um, everything that we've talked about thus far just kind of speaks to what we did last year. So this slide is where we are, um, real-time, and this was data that was pulled as of, um, Monday, which was yesterday. Uh, so as of yesterday, we have a hundred and three vacancies that are posted. If you went to the SES website, a hundred and three vacancies posted. Out of those hundred and three, we have eight recommendations that are in queue. That means principals have interviewed and they have recommended eight candidates, and we're in the process of doing a background check and doing all of the employment screenings to make sure that they're eligible for actual hire. We also have twenty-two excess teachers and, uh, Teacher on Special Assignment or TOSSAs that have been deployed to, to some of these vacant positions, and those are fully licensed, certified teachers. So what that leaves us with is, um, only seventy-three vacancies to fill. Now, I will say, one thing that's coming up is, we, due to the, uh, increase in enrollment and needs of our students, um, we are going to be posting about thirty or so sped positions, sped teaching positions tomorrow, um, or maybe this afternoon or tonight, uh, and we'll have a special job fair for, um, for those positions as well, but that will make the vacancy number go up. But I think to be under a hundred at this point in this, in the school year, um, when other districts are really suffering, when we look at, uh, some of the data from even in the state of Tennessee, like Nashville, um, our, our numbers look really, really great compared to those districts, considering the size of our district and the number of teachers that we have to hire. Uh, since, um, the issue of BTW and the ELC vacancies, we are making sure that we play, pay close, close attention to ELC vacancies and that we monitor those. As of, uh, yesterday, Monday, we have four ELC vacancies. Happy to report none in math, because math is definitely a challenging area for us to recruit and staff. Um, currently, we have three English ELC vacancies and one Biology vacancy, and of those vacancies, um, we're sending, we're, we're sending candidates and referring candidates out to principals, and principals are interviewing, and hopefully we'll see some recommendations come through. As we develop our plan for, uh, not only recruitment but also for retention, um, we work with a partner to just have feedback sessions, uh, so that we can just gather information and make sure that we develop strategies that address some of the things that are going on in our district. So, in, in preparation for, um, the twenty seventeen-eighteen staffing and recruitment and retention work, um, what we glean from some of these focus groups, um, I think it's information that we can definitely use to kind of shape and, and, and develop strategies. And I think, you know, there are, obviously, that there are some concerns as it relates to how teachers are feeling about the district in general. Um, I, I know that we have received feedback just about the initiatives, the new curriculum, um, the, the lesson plans, those kinds of things, but teachers also had mixed feelings about the new compensation plan. Um, we do hope that some of those things can be addressed as we make the first payment, um, for the performance-based increase, and I think the date is November third that we're planning to actually, uh, pay the salary increase. So hopefully, once teachers actually see the change in their paycheck, um, some of those mixed feelings will subside. There's, uh, there were also concerns just around, um, increasing insurance costs. I am happy to report that, uh, we're having open enrollment actually start next week, and for active employees, there is no increase in insurance premiums, so that's something that employees actually should be very proud of, because we attribute that to some of our wellness initiatives actually paying off. We've had, um, an increase in just folks participating in the wellness program, and I think, um, we're now beginning to see like, kind of, the ROI on that. As it relates to kind of some of the feedback that we receive from principals, there were definitely improvements that, um, HR could make as it relates to the hiring process and making sure that those processes are streamlined and efficient, not only for the principal but also for the candidate, so there's work that we can do there. Um, one thing that popped up, um, in, in terms of the feedback sessions were, where principals were excited and actually suggested that they wanted to be involved in the recruitment process. So, uh, from that, we're going to create principal ambassadors that will actually go out on, kind of, on the road with us as we're recruiting, um, candidates to, to go into our pool, so we're excited to kind of get that program, um, off the ground and get that rolling. The main goals that we're trying to focus on, uh, for our overall recruitment and retention strategy, um, for this upcoming season is, A, we want to improve the, the quality of our pool. Talked a little bit about that earlier. We really want to make sure that we adjust the hiring timeline and work with academics to make sure that we carve out time for principals to actually make their hires earlier. And, um, I'll, also, one thing that we're focused on, uh, not only in the, in the, um, recruitment-retention arena, but just overall in general for HR, is really, really making sure that, um, we have a clear focus on customer service and customer satisfaction, where we want all of our stakeholders to feel like they're valued and that they are getting excellent service. Most of this, we've already just kind of went through, so I'll wrap it up and take any questions at this point.
Board Member Love?
Thank you for the presentation. I just have one question. Um, our subs who are either, what, what qual, what, what is the qualification, or how do you determine what's a short-term or long-term sub? How many weeks do you consider short-term?
Uh, a short-term or reg, we call them regular and certified. A short-term or regular, we call them regular and certified subs. So if, if there's a vacancy less than 20 days old, we can send a regular sub. And to be a regular sub, you have to have a degree and I think a 2.5 GPA. But to be a certified sub, which is what would go in a vacancy that's 20 days old or more, you have to obviously be, have, have a degree, have a 2.5 GPA, but also be, also hold a teaching license. So that's considered a certified sub.
So with our regular subs, are they given the lesson plans? Or how, how does that work so that they're able to continue with the lesson? Are they given a lesson plan? Because I know we're not asking them to create one. So are they working?
I may have to punt this to academics, but I, that, that is the plan that's supposed to be in place at the school level, that the, the substitute does have a guide or work plan for that particular day.
And if, if it's going to take longer than one minute, you can send it to me in email.
It's not going to take longer than one minute. All schools have substitute voters. And so the teacher usually leaves, they leave a plan for the substitute teachers.
Board Member Cornell?
Yes, thank you for the presentation. And you've mentioned that some new teachers like to have extra help. And I think that's probably a lot of them are the new teachers. And I think it's great that y'all found that out. And I appreciate you doing the exit surveys. I think we, as a board, we talked about that. I also appreciate the fact that you said 40% responded. It's good to know how, that there's at least a good portion that do that. And, and I, I want to say something in defense of subs who are teachers. I don't know if I should say that now, or should I go ahead? Okay. And also, I'd like to know why some come back, because some do. A lot of us are out there, you know, often recruiting people who work for Shelby County Schools. And one thing I found out that people need to, I think the community needs to realize is a teacher can retire and then draw their state retirement and then come back and substitute. You could be a 40-year teacher and draw your state retirement and substitute 180, certain number, what's the state, 180 days or half a year?
Yes, sir, that's absolutely correct. In fact, most of our certified subs are retired teachers.
So there is a system in place to allow a teacher to retire and then come back and make 85 a day or something, being a, an experienced teacher in that subject and actually make even more money while drawing the benefits. And so I think we need to realize, that's a good pool.
Yes, sir.
That's a good pool for our students.
We're actually going to have kind of an event to, to, for our retirees to encourage them to, to consider subbing for us.
Board Member Woods?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for the presentation, Superintendent. I have a quick question for you. The turnaround time, I wanted to comment you had under the principal comments was about streamlining the process. So typically that, I would interpret that as turnaround time. So once a candidate is identified and the principal wants to onboard, what's the typical turnaround time from the time a candidate is identified and then making it through the processes of HR?
I think, you know, during peak season, like during the summer, that time can go from seven to 10 days. But, you know, times like now, our turnaround time is like three to five days. But peak season, that turnaround time does increase. And I will say like the, the process has been streamlined. We also implemented a new applicant tracking system earlier this year, actually in January. And so it's really helped us in terms of streamlining the process and improving and enhancing the candidate experience as well as the hiring manager's experience.
So even at peaks, just so I can, you know, my takeaway for this is that even in peak season, seven to 10 days from the time a candidate is identified to being ready to go into a classroom, it's seven to 10 days?
Yes, from the time that the candidate is recommended by the principal, seven to 10 days. And of course, that's, you know, that's normal case. You know, sometimes we run into issues with background checks, that kind of thing. But under normal circumstances, that's, that's the turnaround time.
And then also, issues with the candidate pool. Obviously, when you say recommendations, is that a candidate that has been identified from the pool or is that an external candidate? When you talk about the seven to 10 days, is that someone that's already been vetted and part of the pool?
What I will say, they don't necessarily have to be in the pool. But if the person has like the application and everything on file and the principal has recommended them, that, that will fall into the same timeframe. But it, it's not a requirement that a recommendation has to come from the pool.
So, so with that, are there any issues with the, because my issue would be, if, if I'm a candidate looking for a job and I'm in the pool and I'm no longer looking, I've moved, I went, taken a job with another district, do they remain in the pool, part of your count? Is there a way to scrub that pool to be, have a more accurate listing?
That was actually on one of the slides that I was, that I had to click through, yes.
That was on a 30, that was on a 30-minute version.
Yes, our, our chairwoman was, she was coaching me along. But yeah, Director Ballinger and Ms. Osborne, that's one of the things that they, they've really gotten a lot better at in terms of making sure that we are scrubbing that pool on a regular basis to ensure that the candidates in the pool are actually still interested. And so that's one of the great features of the new applicant tracking systems, that we're able to send out those surveys to the candidates so that they can respond us, respond and let us know if they're still interested or not.
And you also mentioned goals. Like you say, you guys were either at goal as far as your pool of applicants or your candidate pool. Do you also track, do you dig deeper to track? Like, we want to have a certain number of science teacher or certain number of math teachers in that pool? So when you look at goal and you present to us your goals, are you, are you at goal in all subject areas? Or you at goal in overall number of candidates?
We do, we do have an overall candidate pool goal, but we also have subject area candidate to vacancy ratio goals that we try to make sure that we hit those targets as well as we're recruiting. I think.
So when you, just to be clear though, so when you mentioned we're adding their goal, you're talking about the overall, the holistic goal numbers. But that may not have been representative of the, the harder to fill subject areas?
The information I presented earlier was for our last staffing season as we built the candidate pool. And from what I understand, we did hit all those marks in terms of what our goals were for the candidate pool. Of course, that's not the case now because, you know, we're ramping up for the upcoming season.
Right, and I know Bill is going to give me the hook in just a second. But I do want to ask about, I do want to ask a question related to, have we seen, I noticed you had an uptick in the number of vacancies from the beginning. We, I know we were working with a partner agency before that were, were helping you. And then we brought a lot of that in-house. Do you credit any of the vacancies to that being no longer a part of your solution? Or is it a, well, I'll let you speak to that. Is there any correlation there?
That's why I did want to mention that the way that we are reporting our vacancies now is a little different. Previously, vacancies were reported as of the vacancy ID date. So the number for the first day of school reporting could be any vacancy identified two weeks prior to the first day of school. That's what was reported. Because I will say, you know, and, and that is a smart thing to do in terms of if someone, you know, resigns five days before the start of school, you know, it's, it would be very difficult to get someone hired and onboarded by the first day. But what Superintendent Hobson is interested in is knowing day one of school, how many classrooms do we have without teachers? And that's why we now, we now report the real-time number in terms of first day of school vacancies. So there is a difference in the reporting. But I mean, to be honest, there are, there are challenges anytime, you know, you outsource and then you bring the function back in-house. But I do think overall, the performance of the, of the recruitment and staffing team has been exceptional considering, you know, a smaller staff, but still able to hit the numbers and actually making more hires. We hired 905 teachers.
So I'll close with Superintendent is that, again, thank you guys for the work on the presentation. And I think a lot of the suggestions that are either ongoing, things you've already been doing, or new suggestions, we appreciate that as well. But one of the things I would, that concerns me is that the amount of time and effort that went into this great presentation, would a better solution have been making the principal available to say that this is a certified teacher in the classroom, end of story, period, and move on to another issue? So was, was the principal able to speak to, to that issue regarding, you know, that we got a qualified teacher in the classroom?
Yes, and I think, Mr. Woods, that, you know, when these information requests start coming in, you know, we got, we still have all this old system. So trying to piece together from the ISAM system and Apex system and different systems. So the principal knew that she had a, a sub, I think that she reached out to was retired, but she didn't know all of her credentials.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Superintendent. So Board Member Jones looking at me like I better not ask another question. So I conclude, thank you.
Moving on to Board Member Jones, you had a question?
Thank you. Mr. Superintendent, my question is the same one I had at the committee meeting around the mutual, the mutual consent. So for start of school, you deploy teachers. So are you, is there a plan to implement that same strategy? Once the principal has had ample opportunity to interview and make a selection, are they going to be given a certain amount of time and notified that if you're not making one, that one's going to be made?
Yes, what we did, Ms. Jones, is we said, you know, we recognize mutual consent. So we're not going to force you to take this teacher to be your teacher of record. But until you find a teacher, this teacher's going to be in your class. But I do think, Ms. Jones, that we should maybe have another conversation about the way we implement mutual consent. Because I think when we passed policies a few years ago, it's just, this is what it's got to be. But the statute actually gives some discretion based on best interest of kids. And I think that we, when you have schools that are persistently hard to staff, we're just going to be much more aggressive about making sure people are available in there.
Welcome that conversation since I voted against mutual consent from the beginning. But, and my concern too, when I bring that up, I know you're saying that you don't want the successful candidate who is eligible for the new promotion to leave until you feel that. But I'm also trying to consider that individual too. They've achieved a certain level of success. And so I don't, I would like to limit the amount of time that they would be held back before they could take that new position.
Okay, if there's no more questions, I just do want to make a closing comment that I think it would have been helpful for our community as well as board members and the parents to have felt a sense of relief if we had known that there had been a certified teacher in place during that substitute time. So I think in the best effort that we can communicate those things so that it does not cause as much panic as it did for so many of our parents. And I'm sure board members, as I did, got many phone calls from community leaders, from parents, all throughout the district who had a concern about our 65 students at BTW. So I think in, in the ways that we can best communicate those things, Superintendent, on the front end, and get that information quickly to create more assurance for our parents as well as our students in the community, I would advise us to do so.
Finally, Madam Chair, my report, I know I'm going a little long. But did want to just let the board know, I think we have about 7,700 parents who have opted out of the, of the FERPA. We had some challenges because the new student information system and some student IDs. So then we went to a manual process. I think we got about 7,700, but have still received some more manual entries. And then also what's happened, board members, is as you know, the state has actually sued Nashville. And the way the lawsuit is pled is saying that Nashville and any other district would be required to turn over the information. So really wanted to get, update the board, but then get some, get some feedback or direction from the board as to, as to how we want to proceed. Because the board remembers when you did the resolution, we were directed to consult the board before we released any information. So I don't know, Dr. Ray, if you had any more updated numbers? Okay. Just want to update the board on that.
Ms. Love?
This is, first, a clarifying question. The law stated that the only parents that had to turn over, well, the only schools that had to release the information was priority schools, right? Or did it say all Shelby County schools?
I believe it's priority schools, or kids who attend priority schools.
Okay, so another question. If this is about choice, making sure parents are knowledgeable of all the options that are in Shelby County, I would like to know what conversation you and our general counsel is having to ensure that all parents receive knowledge as it relates to schools, if this is the road that we're going down? Because we have charter schools that are inside of Shelby County school zones. We have charter schools that are supposed to feed into Shelby County schools. So are we swapping information? Or are we just saying Shelby County released information for the charters to recruit our parents? But we're not saying that we want the children in the charter school to know all of their options?
Well, we certainly, Ms. Love, would be entitled, particularly for the ASD schools, to the same thing in terms of requesting the information from their parents. But we haven't gone down that road because we wanted to close the loop on how does, how do we want to proceed? I mean, in other words, do we want to just wait and let the lawsuit play out? Do we want to just turn over the information? You know, so we just really look at some, for some direction on that. And I think that ultimately, if a court says you got to give them the information, then we all would be entitled to send information from the ASD.
Okay, well, I'm only one board member. But I would say if it's not making sure that all parents have, know all of their options, I'm not in support of turning anything over.
Board Member Cornell?
Ask our attorney, where is, where is this case? Is it in state or federal court?
It's in state court in Nashville.
Can the, can that, the Nashville, can the Nashville Davidson Board of Education, since it does involve some federal issues, can they ask that it go to, go to federal court?
Mr. Cornell, I think that issues that are being raised have an impact on Shelby County as well. I think Superintendent mentioned, as planned, although we're not a named party, it actually has the impact.
Can you use your microphone, please?
It actually has the, although we're not a named party, it actually has the impact of potentially restraining any conduct on the part of Shelby County as well. That being the case, I consider this pending litigation against Shelby County. And it'll be my preference to brief the board on its various legal options. That being said, you know, arguably, both a federal court and a state court would have jurisdiction to hear this dispute.
Board Member Jones?
Mr. Superintendent, you said 7, 7,700 roughly have been returned. So do you know how many students are in our priority schools total? I was just trying to get an idea of.
We can get that information. But I think that we sent out to all parents, to all parents.
But the, but the release, so, okay, so that wouldn't help, that wouldn't really help.
Ms. Bibbs?
Thank you, Chair. Superintendent, so thank you for giving us that number. We were wondering about what's at the, the 7,700 number. And I guess to Ms. Jones' point around knowing the number of students in priority schools, I guess my other concern is that just how we distributed the information about parents knowing. Because if you're saying to me that you sent it out to all schools, I cannot honestly say that I received information about knowing to do it. Because it's on my mind, I went to the website and did it. But I think that goes speaks further about how we communicate with parents and the importance of them understanding what's happening versus them picking pieces off of a newspaper, you know, article or maybe something that flashed, you know, on TV about how we communicate to parents. You know, this just brings up another topic that we've been talking about and focusing on around true parental engagement and what that looks like for us.
Dr. Ray, can you speak to the communication plan with parents?
Thank you, Superintendent Hobson, member of the board. I communicated directly with principals. And also, principals received all the information, phone scripts, to contact all parents within their school. Also, the information was on our website, as you indicated, Ms. Bibbs. And also, I think our communications team did mobile calls, blast. We even engaged the media as well. So we tried to send the information out by students. We sent information home to students, printed copies home during the, I think, the progress reports. When they came home, that information should have been brought home by the students.
Are there any other questions to Superintendent? Mr. McCornell, it's your second time speaking.
I wasn't finished on my first one, I'm sorry. But it was answered. The one, the one thing I want to follow up on here is, where are we in terms of parents? Let's say tomorrow, they want to opt out. And there's been no determination. And we, let's say we decide to wait for the court case. Then could I tell a parent to go to? Then could I tell a parent to go to the website and go ahead and opt out? I mean, we gave them a goal, but can they still do it?
Yes.
Yes. And still, and this is still an ongoing process. Today, we receive probably information from two or three schools that's not included in the superintendent's number. So, it's ongoing. Parents know. The principals got a big push last week during our principals' meeting. So, you know, hopefully, our parents take advantage of the opportunity.
Go ahead, finish up.
And so, so do they go to the website? Or can they actually call the parenting center? Or is there a number they can call? How easy is it?
All of the above. Of course, the parent welcome center, 9001-416-5300, it's on our website. Also, the information was given to students to take home. If they go to the schools, they can get a copy and sign up then. They can go directly to the website. The student ID numbers will be on the report cards tomorrow. So, if there are issues with the student ID numbers, they can actually look at the report card and use that information to go online to feel like to opt out for.
There are no other questions? I think under the advice of general counsel, I think that we, as a board, probably need to have some conversation. And I would suggest to the board that we convene an executive session that would allow us to be able to talk, since we are one of the unnamed parties in the litigation that is pending against Nashville, Metro Nashville school system.
That's correct.
Okay. So, in light of that, Superintendent, I do think that the board should be briefed where we are. I think that general counsel sent out some information to board members today, but I don't know if they've had time to digest that to really give you a full breadth of where they feel like we should go as a board. But if we are able to have an executive session, I think you could, board members could have those questions answered and move forward. There's nothing else in your report? Okay. All right, we're going to move forward to the action items. Number 8.1, the cost of living adjustment, COLA, in the amount of $227,985,000. Superintendent?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is the cost of living adjustment for Head Start that the program requires. I think it's been before the policy council, and they approved it.
If there are no questions, I do want to make sure that the record reflects that Board Member Oracle has joined us for the board meeting. So, please make sure the record reflects such. We're going to move on to 8.2, preschool development expansion grant in the amount of $6,596,340,000.
Thank you, Madam Chair. If you guys remember correctly, this is the final year of the grant that we, along with Nashville, bid for competitively. And this is the last $6.5 million that we will receive, which is just on your radar, though, board members. So, after this year, I mean, I think this is what, 25, 26 classes? And if this grant goes away, and we think that it may, we're going to have a big hole in some of our pre-K classes next year.
If there are no questions, we're going to move on to 8.2. Mr. Oracle, did you have a question? Okay. We're going to move on to 8.3, Center for Disease Control and Prevention. Grant award for HIV/STD prevention in the amount of $378,750.
That's exactly what it is, Madam Chair. A grant from the, I believe this date, for $378,000 for those purposes.
Board Member Love?
Superintendent, is this going to be a curriculum? Is this going to be, I mean, what, so? Because I didn't, I didn't see any schools, so is this, just give me a little background on this.
Can we speak?
Then, and board members?
It is not a curriculum piece. It is not a new curriculum piece. It is a part of the family life curriculum. And it's, the instruction is done by the PE and lifetime wellness teachers. And it's for grades, students in grades seven through 12. And the focus is on abstinence. Abstinence and safe behaviors to reduce the incidence of increasing the rate of HIV and STDs. Parents have an opportunity to opt out of the curriculum if they like.
So, you said seventh through 12?
Yes.
Okay. Can you give me a reason why you started at seventh grade?
This is how the grant was written. And we just covered those grades, seventh through 12, at this time.
Okay. So, Superintendent, if approved by January, February, I would like to see, I guess, data. How many children are involved? How many have opted into this program? And I would like to follow this to see how effective it is. And in the end, will you have a survey or something for our children to fill out? Or in the beginning, ask them maybe five or six questions to see, I mean, you know, to hear their concerns? So, we'll actually know within, you know, federal guidelines, what we need to really talk to them about.
I'm assuming, is that something that we can do?
Certainly.
Track the usage and the effectiveness and survey. So, we, yeah, yes, Ms. Love, we'll get to the plan on that.
Superintendent, just a question. If this is not a curriculum, what is the grant actually paying for? Is it the staff that's conducting the classes?
The staff is paying, the grant pays for professional development for our teachers and also the training, the professional development. And we work with curriculum and instruction in a curriculum that they have, the Michigan curriculum. It's nothing that we have to purchase. It's part of the lifetime wellness piece.
So, essentially, the grant dollars are to pay for staff and professional development?
Yes.
Okay. There are no other questions? We're going to move on to 8.4, the State of Tennessee Department of Education Family Resource Center grant in the amount of $61,165,000.
That's exactly what that's for, Madam Chair.
Seeing no questions, we'll move on to 8.5, ELA instructional supplemental materials for grades three through five in the amount of $550,989,000.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This material, supplemental material to, let me back up and ask Dr. Griffin to chime in. Our Journeys textbook that we bought about four years ago is not aligned to the standards. And so, our CNI department has gone through to pull out all the texts and all the different read material that is actually is aligned. So, this material will actually supplement our standard curriculum to make sure that kids have the common core line material that they're able to learn from. I will tell the board that we have conducted training on this over the summer and last year. And it's for our grades three through five.
Seeing no questions, we'll move on to 8.6, Mid-South Public Communications Foundation lease of space for radio tower in the, I think there's, oh, in the amount of $34,788,000.
Yes, this is exactly for that, just a lease on the, for where we broadcast our TV and radio. Appreciate, Mr. Oracle, you had looked over it too and had some suggestions. We were able to incorporate that in WKNO suggested or accepted them. So, I think it's a five-year lease.
Seeing no questions, we'll move on to 8.7, the sale of Stafford Elementary School in the amount of $100,000.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is, the board talked about this in the facilities meeting. We actually were given documentation as to the improvements that were going to be made, and they exceeded $3 million. And I think that's a part of the sale agreement.
Seeing no questions, we'll move on. Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize, Ms. Jones.
Just wanted to mention that diet asked for pictures. Pictures were sent, but the way they were sent, we couldn't open them. So, they're going to need to be sent in a different format because we couldn't open the zip drive.
Can we get those out?
Board Member Oracle?
I couldn't open them either. That's funny. I thought it was just me, so I didn't say anything. They, maybe just put them on the staff report so we could all, because then the public has access to it too.
In board docs?
Yeah, in board docs or whatever, the website, whatever. Color pictures are cheap when you just put them on PDFs or JPEGs, whatever.
And Superintendent, I think that general counsel sent some information about this particular item, that there were some stipulations that we asked to be in, in the contract that were not carried out by the party. But I think board members need to just take a look at that information to make sure, based on some of the feedback that was given in the facilities meeting about some of the things that they wanted to make sure were listed in the contract. Moving on, there are no other questions to 8.8, Perea preschool lease in premise of former Klondike Elementary School in the amount of $50,850,000.
That's right, Madam Chair. I think we went over this in facilities too. They will be leasing a portion of the building. We also will be operating a portion of the building, and their square footage is, comes out to that amount.
Board Member Oracle?
So, Superintendent, the portion of the building we're operating, will be operating is what?
Is it the, so, we're going to have some offices in the community engagement offices on a separate floor. They've got a floor, I guess, a small space for their pre, for their pre-school. And I guess we, really in talking to them, they were trying to cut costs and we needed some space. So, to just, to share the.
Space?
Well, we, for our family, community engagement folks to be out in that community.
Did they, have they contacted us about, because we approved a charter? Is that where they want to have their charter next year?
Yeah, so they're, but they're, yeah, so they would be teeing up for the 18, 19 school year. And they have not specifically requested the location. I know there was some discussion about buying the location, but they haven't reached out about that yet. Because I don't know, I think they may be doing a phase-in, if I'm correct? One grade at a time, I believe. So, their immediate space needs and.
So, we could co-locate our community engagement office for a while because they're going to start at grade one, grade two?
I'll ask Michelle before I speak some more.
Can you speak into the microphone? Turn your microphone on, please.
There you go. We, they did reach out last week, the charter school, to inquire about purchasing it. You know, we have to have an appraisal. So, I initiated the appraisal process, and that'll take at least a month and a half.
So, ultimately, we could come back with a different, they could come back to ask for more space than the space that they are currently leasing.
Yeah, because I think it's just for a year. Yeah.
Okay. There are no other questions, we're going to move on to 8.9, duplicating paper to replenish warehouse stock in the amount of $584,364.
This is in Board Member McCormick's warehouse. I think it was to Costco in the amount of $584,000.
Seeing no questions, we'll move on to 8.2, HVAC filter replacement services, $229,962 and 12 cents.
That's exactly what it's for, if you want to annotate that, Ms. Phelan.
It's for replacement service across the district. Usually, you replace filters in all HVAC units about three times per year.
I felt you, Board Member Oracle. I knew it was coming.
So, that could be, Superintendent, just as we move into the process, could that, the paper, are those not opportunities? We're spending a lot of money that we could, like, look for minority vendors? Because, like, the paper was, how much cheaper, Ms.?
It was, it was, the market price was $307 per ream. The Costco bid was $2.33, so it's almost $180,000 savings.
Right. What's a ream? Okay. I was asking the expert. I'm sorry. The, but, so, what I'm saying is. Keep going. He's good.
He's good.
The, but that, the filters, I'm sure those are national companies. I mean, maybe some we could buy on Amazon, who knows? But if there's opportunities, those are good opportunities that we could help a small business. And those two in particular. But way to save $180,000.
If there are no other questions, we're going to move on to item 8.11, SCUV installation, Brownsville Road Elementary, in the amount of $117,587.25.
Thank you, Madam Chair. These ventilators at Brownsville Road that need to be fixed. Replaced, I'm sorry.
So exciting. These items are so very exciting to read out. Subject, our item number is 8.12, building improvement for Central High School. And I'm sorry, I don't see the recommended amount.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think it's for 1.238, I believe we brought this to the facility as well.
If there are no questions, and just for the record, I'm reading in that it is 1.2, Moving on to 8.3, track repair at Kirby High School in the amount of $235,985.
That's correct, Madam Chair. The track out there is in very bad shape. And we're just repairing it on the regular maintenance cycle.
Okay. Moving on to item 8.14, Ewing Kessler temporary cooling for Northside Kitchen in the amount of $203,000.
That's correct, Madam Chair. And it's, Ms. Phelan, you want to annotate that?
Out of the Jackson Avenue facility. So, this is for, for the kitchen serving areas and dining areas for snacks and after-school programs to cool that building so we can provide the service around those meals and snacks.
Board Member Oracle?
So, we're on our second year, it's not your fault, of the CNC being here, there, and yonder. So, we're, cold storage is in Jackson.
Yes. Freezer storage is in Jackson.
Do we still use the freezer on Jackson Avenue?
No, we do not.
So, that, that's.
Jackson, Tennessee.
But we turned, we turned the one, the CNC off, right?
Correct.
Oh, yeah, good. The, and then Northside we're using to do some prep.
Right.
And then we're also using.
Grace Creek.
Grace Creek?
Yeah, for the warehousing and dry storage and, yeah.
So, are we still running a fund balance? The positive fund balance? Are we eating away at that?
We're eating away at that. And in terms of annual, we maintain the requirement of a three-month fund balance.
No, I'll make one correction. So, we're actually below, we're pretty much hovering around the three-month requirement in terms of.
The three what requirement?
The three-month requirement in terms of having fund balance for the nutrition fund, and that's where we're hovering.
Is that a result of the fact that we're in flux on the CNC?
That's right.
How much are we spending a year over what we used to spend to have temporary facilities?
I'd have to analyze that and get back to you.
Do you know, Lauren?
I don't know. I can, we can get that number fairly easy. That wouldn't be a challenge.
Were we running a fund balance before because we had our own facilities and we didn't have these costs? Because it seemed like every year we would, our fund balance was increasing.
That's right. So, the child nutrition, that operation made an effort to have access and fund balance. So, we were, before the relocation, we were having a fund balance. And one benefit of that fund balance was related to indirect costs that we could charge based on that. So, they made. So they made a concerted effort to contribute funds for administrative costs, to put in a general fund to be above that three months. This would be maybe the first year where we are below or hovering that three months.
So the USDA we could, or, I guess that's who it is, is it USDA? Who, who would be?
USDA.
So we could charge indirect costs?
If you have three months or more.
Right, but so our indirect costs now are rentals and other things, for freezer equipment and space, okay.
Okay, we're gonna move on to item eight point one-five, Package One, Engineering Services, Mechanical Projects for Jackson Elementary, Idewell Elementary, Georgian Hills Middle, Bellevue Middle, Dunbar, and Brownsville Road Elementary Schools, in the amount of five hundred and seventy-three thousand, five hundred seventy-three thousand one hundred dollars.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I think this and, I guess there's, uh, I guess there's thirteen packages, uh, were all for construction, uh, I think we brought the facilities, Beth, will you just speak generally about them and then the specifics?
These are the packages that we talked through in the ad hoc facility meeting on the sixteenth, and so each package lists all the schools, and a spreadsheet was sent out for the board's request, kind of outlining, um, the packages, and also providing a little bit of detail in terms of what, um, type of project that is, that it is. It's, if it's HVAC, we kinda list the major components that are associated with the building, and also summarize the total, um, dollars and design fees associated with each of the packages. So, as we talked about in the ad hoc facility meeting, this approach enabled us to save two point two million dollars in design fees.
Okay. So, in light of Board members receiving this information via email, um, if it would please the Board, we can try to wrap up all of these packages, um, move through them pretty quickly, cause there's thirteen of them and they're similar in, uh, how they've been packaged based on the, the design, as well as, um, and the design fees. I do have one question for Ms. Phelan before we move through these. Um, of the list of architects that were a part of this kind of rotation-
Yes.
I thought at one time that we had talked about making sure to refresh that list, and that there were, uh, opportunities for us to bring in other minority and/or women, um, architectural firms that weren't previously a part of this rotation, because if they aren't part, currently a part of the rotation, how do they get into the rotation?
Right, so, um, the, the list was built in fifteen, sixteen, and there was twenty-eight, uh, vendors on that list, and out of that, there are four minorities, so, um, I'm gonna defer to Ms. Allen if we have an intent to, uh, open that up in the future in terms of adding more vendors.
Uh, yes, they, so last year they did do a refresh, so the list that we have is from the vendors from, uh, the RFQ from FY sixteen, uh, twenty sixteen, so this year in, in twenty seventeen, we're, we're looking, we're gonna put out that pre-qualification list again so that we can either add additional vendors, uh, to the list, and kinda separate them out by architect and engineering, and architect and engineering, so we know what all of their capabilities are.
Madam Chair, I think it's important that I remind the Board and public that, uh, we're currently doing disparity study, and at this particular point, uh, Shelby County Schools does not award, uh, any work based on, uh, race or gender. Uh, after the disparity study comes back, the Board will be in a position, uh, to make decisions as to whether or not there's been a desperate impact on those groups in the procurement process, and if it is, you can implement a program at that time, but right now, we do not take that into consideration, other to, other than to not discriminate against those groups in the procurement process.
Thank you for the clarification. Mr. Oracle?
So, um, you, you might just answer, so you have a list-
Yep.
-got refreshed a year ago, and you just go, next, next-
Right.
-next, next, okay. So there's no, you're not pulling somebody out of line?
No.
And, and if the Board at some point wanted to see the list, you could just show us the list-
Absolutely.
-and where you're on the list, I think, so, so it's not a discriminatory process, that's good. So if you apply to be on the list, and I think there was actually, I guess if you call it minority majority, a, a majority contractor, that I think got left off the list, we did it last time, was upset they didn't get it in in time, and that was too bad, and then I think they reapplied-
Yeah.
...last time to the list, I, I think it's, is that right? You're saying, yeah, I remember, uh, them saying something about it, so, so it's a fair process?
Yes.
You, you just run through it.
It's a rotating list.
And it spreads the workaround, we're not dependent on one contractor.
Right, exactly, and it spreads the awards, um, based on time as well, so it's hierarchical, and it doesn't continue to award large deals. Um, there's a whole process around how we manage that list, and we're happy to provide it, uh, to the Board as well.
That's one of the good things we do, I think you all did a good job.
Board Member Cornell?
Uh, I would like to ask questions about the, um, the bids on the new schools. So you had mentioned rearranging this, I still wanna ask questions about-
We'll go through items, so that if you do have questions, you can ask questions when we get to that item. Ms. Bibbs?
Some, um, question or really statement was similar to Mr. Cornell around, um, we have Pack eight point two-three and eight point two-seven as packaged services for, uh, architectural needs, however, we talk about rezoning in those, and I think those need to be pulled out, I think that's, those are two separate conversations. Um, paying for services for the building is different than talking about rezoning kids.
So I'll make a note once we get to that item.
Okay.
If no other questions, we're gonna move on to eight point one-six, Package Two, Engineering Services, Mechanical Projects, Idewell School, Levi Elementary, Rozelle Elementary, Shady Grove Elementary, and A. Macy O. Walker Middle School, in the amount of six hundred seventy-three thousand two hundred dollars. Seeing no questions, we'll move on to eight point one-seven, Package Three, Engineering Services, Mechanical Projects, Melrose High, Mitchell High, Northwest, Northeast Prep Academy, Hamilton High, Ridgeway High, and Raleigh Egypt Middle, in the amount of six hundred ninety-five thousand nine hundred and twenty, not, six hundred ninety-five, nine hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars and sixty cents. Seeing no questions, we'll move on to item eight point one-eight, Package Four, Engineering Services, Mechanical Projects, White Station High and Hanley Elementary, in the amount of two hundred forty-three, five hundred and eleven thousand dollars, forty cents. Moving on, with seeing no questions, eight point one-nine, Package Three, Engineering Services, Mechanical Projects, Trezvant High School and Westwood High School, in the amount of two hundred eighty-seven thousand one hundred seventy-nine dollars and twenty cents. Seeing no lights, we'll move on to eight point two, Package Six, Engineering Services, Mechanical Projects, Treadwell Elementary School and Middle School, and, uh, Delano Elementary School, in the amount of two hundred and seven thousand eight hundred and twelve dollars. Seeing no lights, we'll move on to item eight point two-one, Package Seven, Engineering Services, Mechanical Projects, Shelby Oaks Elementary and Kate Bond Elementary School, in the amount of one hundred and seventy-one thousand seven hundred and three dollars. Seeing no lights, we'll move on to eight point two-two, Package Eight, Engineering Services, Mechanical Projects, Balmoral Elementary, Kingsbury Elementary, and Newberry Elementary School, in the amount of one hundred and twenty-four thousand and twenty-five dollars. Seeing no lights, we'll move on to item eight point two-three, Package Nine, Architect Services, Elsie Elementary School, design of the new K-five school, in the amount of nine hundred and ninety-two thousand four hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars and eighty cents. Board Member Cornell?
Uh, I'm interested in, I'm interested in the amount of energy efficiency that will be in the new school, and what the payback will be, and, uh, what I'm wondering is, if an architect comes back, let's say with a three million dollar higher tag, price tag, but can save us half a million a year for the next thirty years, would they lose, would they lose the bid, or would that be, would, are we considering the amount of energy efficiency that we can recoup? I mean, it may cost us a couple million more on the front end, but we may make millions of dollars over the life of the school in energy savings, or, is that being considered? Are they, are, are energy efficiencies being considered when it comes to-
As part of the design service analysis?
Yes.
I don't believe so. Water?
The new Elsie school, every piece of equipment, lighting, uh, that goes into this, the windows, everything is energy efficient, the lighting, uh, we're using Lutron system, you walk in the building, it comes on, you walk out, it goes off, so all the energy, uh, from lighting, mechanical, everything is energy efficient. All the windows are double laminated with, uh, low-e film on, so everything is energy efficient.
So the lighting is LEDs?
Yes.
Okay, and as far as the heating and air conditioning schools, or, new schools are being built around the country now with geothermal exchange, if an architect were to come and say, "I can put this in and save you millions," would that be considered, or would you, would that be rejected?
If they would come and say, "We can save you millions by putting this in," we'd definitely look at it.
Oh, okay, so, it actually is to the advantage of an architect or an engineer to design a school the same way you design any other business or company, or hospital, or whatever, y'all will consider that?
Yes.
Okay, great, thanks.
Board Member Bibbs?
Thank you, Chair. So, um, as I was looking through this, I think, um, when we look in the notes that are here in Board docs, it actually doesn't mention the, um, statements around rezoning, and I guess I was expecting to see that since Chalk Beat wrote an article about rezoning, and that got parents in the community, um, asking a lot of questions about it, and I knew as a Board we hadn't voted on it, so I guess, I think at Elsie, what I was told is that they actually had a meeting with some parents today, so I think, a couple things that I think are happening in the wrong sequence. I think number one, we need to have the conversation in the, as the full body about it, and then vote on it, and then you go to parents and talk about what that looks like for their community, um, so I do wanna make a note around that. The other thing is, uh, since it's not on here, when are we going to actually have the conversation about rezoning for those two schools?
Superintendent?
Ms. Phelan, I, I, I think a couple things, Ms. Bibbs, I think that whether we do it like now, or in the summer, we still have to move forward with the architect and all that.
Absolutely.
Um, and I think that, um, um, was there, did you guys have, I guess you had, there was some discussion in the Facilities Committee, but I guess we need to have a full-on item discussion around whether, cause there's some things that have to happen under policy at the Board-
Absolutely.
-authorizes it, then we have to go in and engage, um, you know, so, I, I would say that, or I'd like to add it now, at least for the purposes Ms. Bibbs have allowed us to engage the community, cause we can't even do anything-
I, I'm okay with it, but I just wanted to make note of that we are not in sequence according to policy, I think that's the main thing, you know, when you, I have constituents calling me, asking me questions about it, and I'm like, wait a minute, this is not the normal process, and then for a school, I think to have a tentative, or some type of meeting today with parents around it, we, again, we need to make sure we're following policy as to what this looks like.
What kind of, what kind of meeting today was?
Uh, informational meeting, I mean, and then I know that definitely, you know, that community is very, um, interested in knowing what's happening in their community, so they want to know, um, answers, but I think even on our end, I think the Chalk Beat article kinda pushed things forward in a different way for them, but it's also up to us to make sure we're giving out the right information to our, to our constituents.
Okay, that's, I, I agree. I, I, I'd even ask if it's the Board's pleasure, uh, if we could add it at the, just to have the, just so we can start the process, um, if it pleases the Board, if we add it, um, at the business meeting, and if it's the Board's pleasure to at least authorize us to go out and engage the community around what it looks like, and I, I do wanna just say too, Ms. Bibbs, I think that, just for the record, and, you know, for the listening audience, but this is just such a unique situation, the Board approved, um, you know, the building of Elsie, and it, the time it took for the County Commission to go ahead and, and, and grant us our funding request, we couldn't start it in time for, um, the school to have been open next year, beginning next year, which was the plan, so now, if we don't, either we can rezone the kids in January so it can be open, or we can wait to the summertime and it'll push it back, and it won't be open until January of two thousand and nineteen, yeah.
Yeah, so we, in the ad hoc facility meeting, we talked about, um, for the one location, um, it was the Board's will for us to not rezon during the middle of the year, and, um, push out, you know, the starting of the use of that building until, uh, August of twenty. That was the discussion that we had for the Elsie location.
Absolutely, and I think that's why it's important for us to have the conversation in front of the full body, so we can be clear on what's happening, because in the ad hoc committee, you had a good number of people there, but that still wasn't the full body, and I think it's real important before someone takes the story and runs with it-
I agree.
-saying that we're going either way, before we make a final decision.
I agree.
Yeah, and Superintendent, maybe if the Policy Office could just send back, cause I think we are supposed to engage in a minimum of two to three meetings, um, whenever we're doing a rezoning of students, um, so that we can start that process, especially if we are, I think more information on the front end is better than us trying to play catch-up on the back end.
Sure.
And I, Ms. Bibbs, I know that this will be the same probably question that you had about Gillette Night Road.
It absolutely is, thank you.
But it's a little different with Gillette Night Road, so because they don't, they didn't have to rezone.
Well, no, they didn't, but I do think, just going back to the communication factor around what it looks like, so maybe not the rezoning issue, but just the communication factor of them understanding what's happening, you know, I think, um, in ad hoc committee meeting, I, I did stress to Chief Phelan around how the communication piece has not been done in the way it should be done regarding contacting constituents and understanding what this looks like for them. Uh, I know on her end, from the business side, she's doing exactly what she needs to be doing as far as making sure the building happens, but we need to make sure that we're engaging those communities in ways so, so they can understand what's happening, cause I don't want anybody to be talking to her people like, "Hey, what's going on?" and they've already started working.
Yeah, agree.
Yeah, that's, um, Board Member Bibbs, that's one of the items that we took away from that discussion, is Chief Fars and I to put the plan together to actually, you know, go forward with that, so thank you for that feedback.
Mr. Cornell, second time speaking?
Um, Mr. Parliamentarian, if I, if I wanna ask a question of the Attorney, can I do it directly, or do I need to go through the Chair?
Everything goes through the Chair.
Okay, Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
I would like, I'd like to request that our Attorney, and, and I'm making this request not because I have any problem with what the Administration has said, I, I have a high respect for architecture and engineering, planning and bidding and whatnot, but I would like to ask our Attorney to look at the bid and make sure that it's clear, that if a architect, engineering firm can, comes back with a bid that saves energy, that that's on the table as far as they're picking, not that that would be a preference, but that would be something that they've already said, they said they would, they would look at it. Uh, the fact is that extra millions of dollars on the front end can save tens of millions of dollars throughout the time, the time when we're not here, and there's other generations yet unborn using that school, and we're having to pay for, so I'd like to make sure that the contract is, has the language is open enough enough to where we will consider the savings that can occur with, uh, energy efficiencies, because we should do that anyway, and they, they indicated, they wanted to, I just wanna make sure that-
So, General Counsel, you can remark on this statement, but I think that may be a question that should go through the pipeline of procurement, um, as they're thinking through all of these processes, but feel free to elaborate.
Well, the way I understood it is that you would like us to review it and issue an opinion on that, and if it's the will of the Board, we certainly can do that, working with procurement to make sure we're clear on the facts. Uh, only thing I request, I remember, uh, Cornell, again, if it's the will of the Board, that if you could put that request in writing, so I'm very clear in terms of, you know, you know, what's being asked, I can make sure we answer it.
And Madam Chair, thank you, uh, you know, we have, I have constituents that have no kids in school and are writing checks for a thousand dollars for the schools, uh, we have County Commissioners who work in business, and their businesses are being very efficient, and we have other constituents who have kids in schools who need more money and more programs, and the fact is, you know, Paris agreement aside, we can actually save a lot of money using more efficient methods in the future, and everyone else is doing that, and I think we ought to use these techniques, and so I appreciate looking at the contract and seeing where we are.
So just to clarify, Mr. Cornell, you're gonna put in writing what your request is, and if it is the will of the Board, then the, um, General Counsel can opine an opinion? Is that correct? You could put in writing your request?
I can put it in writing, but I- I can put it in writing, but do I need to make a motion to ask him to look at it? Or, I would assume I could ask him to look at it individual.
You know, provided that there's no objection, and anybody wants to vote, I can review it and provide an opinion to the Board in response to your question. So, the opinion will go to the Board as a whole.
Seeing no objection by any of the Board members, I am going to move forward. Ms. Jones, did you have a question? No. No other questions? Let's move on to 8.24, Architect Services, Delano. Delano, I always do this, and I should not, because Ms. Love's children will come up to me after the meeting to make sure that I know how to pronounce their school correctly. So, Delano Elementary School, six classroom addition, and the amount of $110,000. Board Member Love?
Superintendent, just for clarity, the portables will be removed, and the six classrooms will be built?
That's correct.
Okay. What's the timeframe?
Tomorrow.
So, this, these bids are for the design work, and then as soon as, you know, the design work is complete, then we'll push these packages through a procurement process. And then, once we go through the procurement process, then we'll be able to better project the timing, because it's based on the bids.
Okay. And one more question. So, has, have you guys had any conversation about adding a gym to the school? Because I don't want to sound like Board Member Cornell, but I know there's a lot of conversation being had about earthquakes, and you know, the possibility for an earthquake, you know, to come to Memphis. I just want to make sure that, you know, when we're talking about, you know, redesigning our schools, or doing different things, that we're taking the potential for an earth, oh Lord, potential for an earthquake to come, you know, so I mean, has that-
So, we have, Ms. Love, I think that this, these came out of, you know, we wanted to make sure that our high-performance schools had space. So, I think that that could, we could certainly have those conversations. But if you recall, this was around, you know, we knew we had schools like Delano, and Richland, and Grahamwood, and I forget the other schools, you know, Whitehaven, White Station, that, you know, either needed just more space or some spruce ups, so, but we can certainly go back and look and see-
Okay, thank you.
-the impact of that for you and Mr. Cornell.
Thank you.
They used to say, "Feed them long enough," and now it's hang around them long enough. So, we're going to move on. We're going to move on. I do, Superintendent, I do have one question. We did run into this issue when we were doing design plans, and we've pretty, Mr. Orgel would be the first to mention that we needed to make sure that our design plans are more state-of-the-art and meet the needs of our communities. We've been using pretty, a pretty much rote architectural plan for the last few years, and our challenge when we built West Haven is that we did not build for growth. We built for where we were and the number of students at those two schools, but we did not incorporate if that school had any new growth. And so, I do want to make sure that as we're thinking through and approving these architectural plans, that does have to be some consideration. On a, you know, good note, the district has had some growth in enrollment, and as we're thinking about new schools, we are hopeful that more students will be coming to those new schools that are being designed in both the ALCI and Goodlett area. So, I'm sure Mr. Orgel will be on top of this.
And just a plug, Ms. Falen, to your point, I think that 82 of our new vacancies are as a result of increased enrollment.
Board Member Jones?
I just, that's, I guess that's the point that I brought up at the meeting. So, we're building schools, most of our schools now are over 100 years old. So, we shouldn't be building on projected enrollments for the next 10 years. We should be building on projected enrollment for at least 50 years. And so, I would hope that the architectural design would have, would be such that what we build today, we could add to with ease in 20 years. There's some, the design should be, allow for additions later on, if, even if that's 20 years now. We shouldn't build something that is going to be problematic to add a wing or addition to. The design should take that in, into consideration. That's my opinion.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Moving on to 8.25, Package 11, Architect Services, Grahamwood Elementary School, 10 classroom addition, and the amount of $165,000.
I'm the junior board.
Seeing no lights, we're going to move on to 8.26, Package 12, Architect Services, Richland Elementary School, and 14 classroom addition, and the amount of $176,000. Seeing no lights, we'll move on. Item 8.27, Package 13, Architect Services, Goodlett Elementary School, design of the new K-5 school. And I think just caring over Ms. Bibbs' comments about making sure that we are in policy with continuing community meetings as we're emerging schools. Seeing no lights, we'll move on to 8.28, Security Systems for Various Locations in SES School District, and the amount of $275,000. Board Member Orgel?
So, is this, who's, Beth, is this?
Chief Darlin.
Chief Darlin, you have a microphone?
Yes.
Because our Chairwoman, she likes those microphones. The, is, is this like Sonatrol? Is that the same kind of thing?
Yes, this is, this is a system that we've had in the school district for over 20 years, which is, monitors our intrusion alarms, one of the systems that has been enabling us to save a lot of damage and destruction in the schools if we do get any intruders.
So, is, is this the monitoring service monthly for the, is that what that is? I know it's a three-year deal, but is it, is that the monitoring service?
This isn't the monitoring service. This is the actual system. They manage the system for, as we monitor the system throughout our process, but they have the, the actual owners of the, of the equipment that we purchase.
So, this is to install them in additional schools?
Yes, it is.
Got you. Do we, I, I might have missed this, I don't understand. What, the, what schools is this going into?
This will be in every school. The schools that we don't have it in will be installed, and it'll be in the new schools that we, that we're configuring also. It'll be in all schools.
But the amount that we're paying, is this for every school?
Yes.
And, but some schools already have it? How many schools already have it?
Yes, all schools have it, but what this does, it gives, if this is the, the actual software, you know, training, maintenance for the systems that we already have. We were leasing this from them for years, but we, we went into a contract to actually own the system. But this, but with this now, we can, we have them actually monitoring and assisting us in upkeep of the system.
So, all the schools have it now?
Yes.
This is just the software and the monitoring equipment and the training?
Yes.
Will that be an ongoing expense then?
No, this is for the year with an additional terms for up to four years.
So, is it an ongoing, is that the price every year, Chief, just to?
Yes. Yeah, this is the contract. We tried to, we were going to bring it last year, but we, it went out to bid because we've had this company since, since I've been here in the school district, and prior to me getting here. It went out to bid to see was anyone in the country doing and delivering this service. This is a sole source that we've been utilizing and saving the property in and around our schools since we've had.
And to add to Chief Darlin's point, so, this will be a one-time cost, and for, it's a five-year contract with a four-year renewal. So, it will be kind of a re-incurring cost that we'll have to pay each budget year that we'll budget for.
That's what I was asking. Okay.
Okay. There are no additional questions. We'll move on to item, sorry. 8.29, October 2018, Budget Amendment. I don't see an amount. Mr. Johnson?
So, this is the-
This is the October Budget Amendment. We're increasing our, our total budget by 5.3 million dollars, seeing that for the Special Revenue Fund, the Federal Fund, and the Internal Service Fund. The Special Revenue Fund, we're, we're actually decreasing that by $192,000. That is to make sure that we're in compliance with Head Start. So, there are six positions that we're, we're reducing in terms of voluntary pre-K, and we're picking up at Head Start. The second is around the federal programs. There are a number of federal program grants that we're aligning to the, the final grant award amount that we've received. So, this goes for School Improvement Grant, IDA Part B. It also goes for CTE Perkins, the Project Prevention, and also the CTE Equipment Grant. And then the last is related to the Internal Service Fund, and this is a fund that is enterprise fund, so it's self-funded, and we're increasing that budget by $273,000 because there is more production or work that's going through print service, which is why that budget is being increased.
I do want to make that clarification. This is a budget amendment for 20, October 2017. It needs to be corrected in Board Docs to say 2017. Ms. Goins? Ms. Goins, just so that it's correct in Board Docs moving forward, this is actually October 2017, Budget Amendment. It says 2018. Okay, moving on to item 8.30, the 2018 Budget Calendar. It should be 18 Budget Calendar, correct?
So, this would be for, this would be for fiscal 18, 19 budget year. This was, we shared the budget calendar with the Audit and Finance Subcommittee. We reflected feedback that we have from the Board. I think the biggest takeaway that I heard from the Board was making sure that we had a communication plan and a parent engagement plan. We've been working with Chief Powers in terms of the communication plan, and then Cynthia Alexandra in terms of over parent engagement. We've also been working with her in terms of how to strategize to first educate parents and the community, make sure that we're engaging them, and then making sure that we're, and lastly, making sure that we're mobilizing folks as well.
Seeing no lights, we'll move on to item 8.31, 2019 Budget Priorities. And so, Mr. Johnson, if, just for the record, we could show that these are 18, 19 budget, so that the, it's easier for people to understand it's the fiscal year?
Yes. That's correct. It should be 18, 19.
Thank you.
This is again, this is part of our Board Policy 2001 in terms of related to budgeting, our budget process, and that we're adopting our Destination 2025 strategic priorities as our priorities. So, essentially, as we go through the process, that will be our North Star, guiding the work and what we're including in this budget to make sure that we're aligned to reaching those goals.
Board Member Love?
Question, our Superintendent, the IZON priority, was that given to us by the state, or was that something we created?
It came out of Race to the Top. So, when the state of Tennessee got the grant, I think like $400 million or so, it gave states the right to do that, but it also gave the district ways to come up with innovative things if they wanted to, so we just took advantage of that.
So, like for IZON and ASD, their goal is to take the schools from the bottom five to the top 25 in five years. Was that ours, or was it the state?
That was, I think initially, that was the ASD's aspirational goal, so we said, we thought we could do it too. So, I don't think it, I don't think it was codified in the statute. I think that was what was put in the ASD's grant, was their goal.
Okay. So, five years is approaching, so I think we need to go back and look at realistically, you know, our goals as it relates to our IZON schools.
I agree.
Thank you, Board Member Love, and I think it'd be a great item to add for our retreat to align as well. If there are no other questions, we'll move on to Board Items. 9.1, Proposed Policies, Forced Reading. I'm turning that over to Ms. Stewart.
Ms. Stewart?
We presented these policies to the IDO Committee. Policy number 2020, Travel Expense Policy, it's a new policy. Policy number 3003, Authorized Use of School-Owned Materials. We're recommending repeal of that particular policy because the information is contained in our Inventory Management Policy. And Policy number 4053, Background Checks, revisions to that particular policy.
There are no questions. We'll move on. If there are no objections from Board Members, item 9.20, where we're going to do a Joint Academic Performance and Community Engagement Presentation, if there are no objections, we will not be having that presentation tonight. Seeing no objections, we'll move on to item 9.3, Charter Advisory Committee, Second and Third Quarter Recommendations. Ms. Bibbs?
So, we did have a committee meeting that really detailed all of these things, but I think if, so that I'm not really just reading and talking to you guys, I'm going to get those chiefs that are responsible for each section to kind of just give a general overview of the recommendations. So, then that way, we'll be able to see if anyone has questions. I think at the committee meeting, we did have, it went quick, fast, in a hurry, because really no one had questions. And probably the person who I thought would have the most questions was my friend, Board Member Jones, and she was like, "Oh, okay, I'm okay." So, she's always my litmus test for round questions. But I will start off with you, Chief Johnson, around just funding and administrative fee questions.
In terms of funding, we, we, in terms of funding, we talked about how the district and charter schools can come together around shared services. And there were, how we thought about shared services for the district is, where would there be some advantages of doing that? One would be around economy of scale, and whether there's a competitive advantage in terms of providing a particular product or service as well. Second part is that we discussed three different models in terms of shared service. So, one would be kind of a no-fee shared service. This could be where there is no incremental cost. We're already providing it, and to add a, you know, to have charter school participation would not be additional costs. The second would be, if there is an incremental cost, there would be a fee for the service. And then we also talked about compliance service as well. And some of this, we already offer in terms of IDA. And I guess, there was a lot of talk in terms of how to quantify this, and thinking about having a manual, thinking about having a feedback loop, and thinking about actual process to implement this. There was also agreement in terms of legislative agenda items that not only benefit charter schools, but also benefit the district as well. So, when, when we're advocating for additional funds, there's a mutual benefit on both sides to receive those additional funds as well. And then exploring opportunities, as it, in light of today's discussion about our talent pool, that was one opportunity that was identified by both the district and charter schools, is how do we partner to strengthen the talent pool within Shelby County to make sure we're getting- Is how do we partner to strengthen the talent pool within Shelby County to make sure we're getting the highest quality teachers and school leaders? So finding those opportunities was also something that was discussed. And the last thing is that, this is not, I think oftentimes the discussion is shared that what shared services and what can we, the district, provide to charter schools? There was also discussions in terms of what shared services, what services and products can the charter school provide to district? So looking at that partnership both ways, it's just not one direction.
Thank you, Chief Johnson. So for accountability and oversight, I'll go to Chief Leon.
Thank you. And Chair Ackberry and I facilitated a group of both charter leaders and district leaders to come to our recommendations. And essentially, the recommendations were to establish academic, operational, and financial scorecards for both our district and our charter schools. And in the case of lower-than-standard performance on the part of a charter school, we would initiate essentially a three-year process whereby we would ask for action plans for improvement. We would meet with board members, we would inform parents. But if the school had not improved over the course of a three-year period, we would recommend to the board revocation.
Thank you, Chief Leon. The next one is facilities, which I know there was an exciting article written in Chalk Beat about this. So Chief Baylen, you have a large job to explain around facilities.
Okay, so the dialogue that we had in our committee and then in the last review of the CAC recommendations was our team focused on a couple of things. One is that, you know, per usual, any offer that would be provided to us for a building would go through the approval process of the board. You know, we tend to bring those types of discussions to the ad hoc facility meeting and then into the work session. And so, our committee focused on separating the determination if a charter was in strategic alignment with SES needs. That there'd be a spectrum of consideration in terms of the disposition or the pricing of that building. And we also talked about the fact that Brad's office would develop the alignment, or make, you know, the appropriate determination about the alignment. And my office is really more focused on the disposition of the building. And so, once that strategic alignment was determined, then my office would work with the charter on their offer, considering all costs. We listed preferences in terms of, of course, you know, SES would rather sell buildings rather than lease buildings because we want to get out, you know, of the maintenance costs and also the deferred maintenance costs. But we would, at the will of the board, we consider leases. I think my role in the process is to make sure that the offer is considered all costs related to the building itself. And, you know, my role would be to negotiate, you know, help negotiate the best offer for the building. And that's kind of how we approached that project.
Board Member Bibbs, are there any other?
We have one more committee, but then I think, to help my colleague, what I'll do is that Chief Powers makes her presentation, and then we'll just take all questions after that.
Thank you, Ms. Bibbs. Our update was around helping families understand the different types of educational options that they have now in our community from traditional schools, optional schools, Izones, charter schools, all the different types that we have. So our recommendation is around creating a showcase of, for school choices that are available within Shelby County schools by working with a established committee that would include charter representatives. So we can develop a one-stop shop, basically a showcase of schools where families are able to see everything that's available to them in one place. And they're able to get real-time information, talk to principals, talk to teachers, and collect information. So they're able to then make an educated choice based on actual data and then actual information that they receive from the school. So the recommendation is to develop the, or to establish the working committee, and then start the planning process for the event.
Thank you for that. I think I answered Board Member Cornell's question. So just if anyone else had questions before we move on.
Ms. Bibbs, if I can just say, I mean, I just want to applaud you and your leadership. I think that the... This has been a long time coming. I know that, I see Luther Mersch out there, he's done a great job in kind of wrangling the charter community together. I saw Shep earlier, some of our other chairpeople. And, I mean, we've been talking about this now for a while. And I think the main sticking points had to do with facilities. And I think the way that we came together and came up with something that people can work with was very important. Because, I mean, at the end of the day, you know, we've all got serious work to do, whether it's district run, charter run, just the date it is, what the date is. So, you know, we've got to be smarter about, you know, the way that we're all working together to support kids. So I think this is a huge step in the right direction. And just want to just applaud you and the board's leadership, and then staff all the work they put in on this.
Thank you, and thank you to staff members, as well as, you mentioned Luther. And Cynthia was in our community engagement meeting earlier, Cynthia Allen, who served as co-chair with Luther, just around this work. It has been a long tedious process, but we're excited that we know we'll be moving forward.
I just want to take a point of privilege to also echo Superintendent's comments that as we move to becoming a portfolio district, it really is important that we had a lot of these things worked out. And I do want to thank Ms. Bibbs and her leadership for taking us through this very tedious task, but getting us to a place that I think all of us feel comfortable. So thank you very much for your work, and for taking on IBO to put all these things into place.
No other questions before we move on to, I'm sorry, Ms. Love?
I also want to thank my board member, Ms. Bibbs, and to the staff for all your hard work. I do want to challenge the district as we talk about our showcase for our schools. Superintendent, one of the issues that I had is if we're truly going to showcase all of our schools and let our parents know about all the choices we have, we as a district must become real intentional about making sure that we provide resources and services for our schools because we have programs in our schools that are cut because of the budget, not because of the principal saying, I don't want this program anymore. So when we talk about choice and making sure that we have something to offer parents, I think we really need to look at what, I mean, what is it that each school has to offer? What's unique, or what is it that each district has to offer as it relates to bringing our parents and children in?
I agree with that, Ms. Love, and I think that, just point of context. So I think that, you know, fortunately, you know, we shouldn't, I guess, the age of just talking about what do we cut in the balance has been stabilized. And I know that, we did earmark some dollars for marketing for specific schools. So I agree. I think that, you know, we'll continue to do a better job of supporting schools so that they can tell their story and be places that people want to go.
Let's find some money so we can market all of our schools.
Seeing no other lights, we'll move on to nine point four, SES Board Member Strategic School Funds Allocation Program Resolution. And I think since Mr. Caldwell is not present to share, do we need to read it into the...
I wrote it.
Okay. Mr. Orgel?
Chris and I did this together. He put it in, he put it into final form and did a great job. So I think this is great, and I think the following, the next item is going to be some...
Some allocation.
Yeah, to spend some of the money. But the big thing is, is we all need to go to our schools and within our district and see if they have needs that we can't, that we're not funding here. And it could be small things, it could be computer programs, it could be, you know, something that the teachers need and that will help the students. And, and so I, I just, I've gone to some of my schools already, I know Stephanie has, and said, hey, what can we do to help you? And trying to get this done as quick as possible, thanks staff, Lynn, and whomever else was involved, so that we can get the money rolling to the schools and hopefully get these things approved and help our students. Chris did a good job.
Can it be, this could be read into... Billy, do you want to read it into the record tonight or next week? Since we're all ready for the long haul, I would suggest maybe just go ahead and read it into the record tonight.
Whereas the Shelby County School Board approved funds in the twenty seventeen eighteen fiscal year, general fund budget for board members to individually allocate from five thousand up to fifty thousand to individual schools in their districts, not to exceed one hundred and twenty-five thousand in total. And whereas the decisions concerning how much which schools at what amounts are to be designated by the individual district board member representing the schools, and whereas these funds are to be timely, strategic, and tactical infusions consistent with the goals set out in Destination Twenty Twenty Five, the SES Board Vision and Core Release. And whereas the objective of this program are to inform board members about the needs of individual schools, as well as our district as a whole, to build strong relationship with school leadership, students, families, and neighborhood community stakeholders, and allow board members with guidance from school principals and SES administration to address reasonable funding requests that are unique to individual schools in a timely, strategic, and tactical manner. That was a run-together sentence, but that's pretty good. Now therefore be it resolved that the Shelby County Board of Education directs the superintendent to develop a process, rules, and regulations, and implementation plans to ensure all expenditures comply with applicable SES district policies and local, state, and federal laws and regulations. All expenditures qualify as appropriate uses of the SES General Fund and Student Activity Fund. Monthly reporting of all the allocations made in board work sessions, and all allocations approved and funded by the last day of March twenty eighteen. Be it further resolved that the Shelby County Board of Education is committed to an annual review of the boardwork session before the next fiscal year SES budget approval, to determine the effectiveness of the program if it should be continued. Seek input and feedback from stakeholders about the program, continually improve and streamline the process without compromising transparency and accountability. Submitted by Chris Caldwell, board member, District one.
And Billy Gordon?
No, Chris did it. I just gave advice. He did a good job.
All right. If there are no questions about the resolution, we appreciate Mr. Orgel taking, taking the charge and getting that read into the record so that hopefully next Tuesday on Halloween, people will be able to go and trick-or-treat at a decent hour because we are getting out of here a little earlier. And for those board members who need to trick-or-treat as well. Okay. So anyway, we will move forward with nine point five, Resolution Proving SES Board Member Strategic Funds Allocation. There are some board members that have already made some recommendations, and this is just approval of those awards to individual schools. Seeing no questions, we'll move on to nine point six. This is approving the charters. This is the Academic Performance Committee Charter.
Someplace along that, I think she did it, for those who are on radio, television, seeing this.
At the advice of the parliamentarian, we need to read the charters into record.
It's nine point five.
Nine point five. And that's different than the one we just read? Oh, yes.
This is the one that actually has what people...
So whereas SES Board Member Strategic School Fund allocations allow board members with guidance from school principals and SES administration to address the unique needs of individual schools. And whereas the Shelby County Board of Education approves the respective board member strategic allocations for the following projects in fiscal year twenty seventeen and eighteen. And now therefore be it resolved that the Shelby County Board of Education directs the superintendent to allocate funds for each respective school to implement the above projects in the amount of...
Thirty-one thousand.
Seventy. White Station High School, fifteen thousand. Shady Grove, fifteen thousand. White Station Middle, six thousand four, forty-six dollars. White Station Middle, six thousand one hundred and seventy-five dollars, totaling forty-two thousand two hundred and twenty-one dollars. Grandview Heights, five thousand. North Haven Elementary, five thousand. Craigmont High School, fifteen hundred. Westside Elementary, ten thousand. Delano, ten thousand, totaling thirty-one thousand five hundred dollars, for a grand total of seventy-three thousand seven hundred and twenty-one dollars. Seeing no lights, we'll move on to nine point six, Performance Committee Chair, Committee Charter, being read into the record. Seeing no lights, and I did, just for the, we do not, do we have to read it? And just as an earlier notation, we did notate which board members would be leading each of these charters, these committees. Nine point seven, Committee... Mr. Orgel?
Ms. Johnson, on nine point, the one before five, I thought Richland High School also had, Richland Elementary also had a request in. I just noticed that. Can we, who would have had that? Ayesha, will you check that too? You didn't have anything from Richland?
Yeah, I didn't have one from Richland, but we can definitely add it.
No, just check. I thought, I thought you might have already had it, and I sent the emails all at one time. So if I messed it up, I'm sorry. But let's check and see if you have an email from me over there. Thanks. Sorry about that, thanks.
And just, Board Member Love, if you had a question?
Just for the listening audience, Chief Johnson, can you speak to, once this is approved, what's the process or the timeline of the schools receiving the funds? You can do it really, really, really quick.
Yeah, absolutely. So I'll give an overview, but I'll also put it in writing for the board as well. So once this is approved for the majority of the projects, our team will go back. We will write a formal letter, not only for the school as a record, because some of this fund will go to their student activity funds as a restricted fund item. And we will work with our internal audit team. The timeline I'm giving my team is about a week once final approval is done, to make sure that we make the transfer to the school. And then we will follow up probably on a quarterly basis to see where the school is in terms of spending those funds for the projects.
You say a week to give the funds, or are you meaning a week to notify the schools that you've been, you know, your board member has given you money?
That's a great question. So I, I think, I think we can prepare a week to give the funds. I think once the, the final board meeting is done, we can notify them the next day. So we can notify that the board members have provided them the funds after our final board meeting. And then it'll take us a week to actually put the funds in their student activity funds.
Okay, so all of these programs, well, all of the school allocations, you've already approved, and they're ready to go? Because I don't, I mean, I think you need longer than a week. I understand a week to notify the school.
Yep.
But if there's things that you have to do dealing with certain projects, you know, I want to give you time to do it.
Thank you, Board Member Love, yeah, I think...
Not too long, but some time.
Yeah, I, I think it's probably, and my, my team probably is kicking me under the table. So I, I think probably, you know, fourteen days is, I think is more than, than reasonable. Because, you know, we have the funds, it's a matter of working with the internal audit team to make, and, and school operations to make the transfer. So I don't see it as a big hiccup.
Okay.
For projects that we cannot transfer, and there will be some where it may require us to, to pay for it through our general fund. Now that may take a little bit longer, but I'll update.
So to be safe, we'll say no more than thirty days.
Okay. Take the grace, Mr. Johnson.
Say it again?
Take the grace she's giving.
Yes, I am.
All right, we're going to move on to nine point seven, Capital Needs and Facilities Committee Charter. Okay, moving on, no questions. Moving on to nine point eight, Community Engagement Committee Charter. And I'm just going to read the, it is recommended that the Shelby County Board of Education approves the Community Engagement Charter. The same for nine point seven, that the Board of Education approves the Capital Needs Charter. And also the same for nine point six, that the Board of Education approves the Academic Performance Committee Charter. Moving on to nine point nine, it is, nine point nine is Evaluation Committee Charter. It is recommended that the Board of Education approves, the Shelby County Board of Education approves the Evaluation Committee Charter.
Objection noted.
9.10, Internal Board Operations Committee Charter is recommended that the Shelby County School Board approves Internal Board Operations Committee Charter. Seeing no lights, moving on to 9.11, 9.11 Legislative and Advocacy Committee Charter. It is recommended that the Shelby County Board of Education approves the Legislative Committee Charter. Legislative and, and advocacy committee charter. 9.12 Procurement Committee Charter, it is recommended that the Board of Education approves the Procurement Committee Charter. Seeing no lights, this meeting is adjourned. I know. Thank you. Oh, my goodness.